All right. Are we, microphone's working?
Yeah.
All right. No crackling or anything, is there? All right, let's call our meeting in order. Seven o'clock Wednesday, June 19th, 2024. Roll call, please. Take your time.
Jeff Goings.
Here.
Bruce Moore.
Here.
Betsy Straw.
Here.
Austin Davies.
Here.
Dan Cheek.
Here.
Owen Castanza. Terry Lynn Craftifer.
Here.
Ion Steer. David Howe. Karina Boyd. Chris Stopkins.
Stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. For your public, for which it stands, on the nation under your hand, for whose will is the breaking justice.
All right, do we have a motion to approve phone participation for Mr. Castanza?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Jeff and a second by Dan. I guess we, roll call, vote.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
Betsy Straw.
Yes.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Jeff Goings.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Owen Castanza.
All right.
Actually, he doesn't own that other thing, it's only people present.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
So you are approved to participate.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion by Dan. Um, what?
Second.
Second.
Oh, oh, Bruce, I didn't even hear you, Bruce, you said second.
Well, you should have used that, you're on real soft voice, I got it.
Must be going deaf. All right, uh, those in favor of approving tonight's agenda? Oh, we need a roll call on that one?
Oh, since Owen's on the phone, everything has to be roll called tonight.
Ah, thank you, we haven't done that in a while. All right, roll call.
Sorry, guys.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Owen Castanza.
Yes.
Jeff Goings.
Yes.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
Betsy Straw.
Yes.
All right, tonight's agenda is approved. Uh, moving on, we got a motion to approve the minutes, uh, from May 29th, 2024, special board meeting.
Move to approve minutes, uh, special board meeting, May 29th, 2024.
All right, motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Jeff. I heard Jeff whisper before you.
I'll give someone else the opportunity.
That's all right.
Speak up, people.
Uh, roll call, vote.
Jeff Goings.
Yes.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
Betsy Straw.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Owen Castanza.
Yes.
All right, May 29th, 2024, special board meeting is approved. And that's the, uh, agenda, minutes. Uh, moving on to public comment, do you have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right, no public comment tonight. Uh, moving on to department reports, uh, engineering, uh, Chris, did you want to add to your, your synopsis here that is in your packet?
I'll add one quick thing, which is contractor's license is starting next week on Street of Brooklyn, traffic control's been dropped off today.
All right. Is that the, what's the Beaverton Road or the Beaver Road project?
Uh, Beaver is done.
Oh, Beaver is done. I'm sorry. All right. Any other comments or questions on the engineering report? Public Works Building's moving along, almost done, still waiting on that, uh...
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
I'll have it broken record.
It does. All right then, barring any questions or comments, uh, moving on, uh, Public Works Report, David, have you got anything you want to add?
Yeah, uh, so next week, we're gonna start working on sidewalk repairs. Uh, we, we are gonna be starting to take the West Grove, if you guys have any, you can reach out and ask what's going on. Uh, by the end, most of actually we could do the whole setting apart, just, and install the base, uh, and then like, probably, we'll be, it's like, sidewalk, sidewalk, so, if you have any questions.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, Jeff.
Um, is West Grove their base, was that put in, was that, or did it change prior? Because I know, like, Sherman Oaks, a lot of the sidewalk is just, like, on top of the dirt.
I, I couldn't really get it out.
Can you bring it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would assume, I mean, obviously, they're trying to do it.
Right.
Okay, so, like, really, if there is some help.
Okay, I just had that one guy in Sherman Oaks on Oak Street. Okay.
That, that one is on my list, we have a spreadsheet, we're trying to go, by neighborhood, some of the areas where there's more, um, stretches that we do it in.
Okay.
But we're just trying, uh, take a couple weeks here, then I can speak on that one.
All right, also, if you guys try to buy Papa Gold Road and Ravens Crest, the trees there are dead, all, all the trees that we give them, David's gonna have them removed, or gonna remove them, the guy will remove them, if you remember, there used to be trees over Brough Woods in the median, right there, when you come off Whitey, now there's flag poles. So, the plan was to tear down that brick and mortar sign for Ravens Crest, and then have these guys try to save the lettering, because the lettering's still nice.
Jeff.
Oh, would you give a little brief?
Yeah, so, I, I had that note, um, I actually had staff go over and look at the sign the other day, um, I don't know that we will be able to reuse the lettering on that. It is, basically what they did is they tapped holes into that brick, and then they are sliding pieces, so each letter has a three or four pieces that slide in, but I don't know if it's usable, I do have to explain, uh, how they leave, uh, on the signs, they're hanging both, they have to sign that matches, what they just did, so I will, you guys.
Something small, like the one in Sherman Oaks, Sherman Lane.
Yeah, the same size as the Sherman Oaks one.
Right. Just so you know, something killed those trees, probably the salt, when I talked today about it, hit a homeowner, a couple homeowners, we talked to them about it, so it's easy, they need to be taken out, they are dead, if you drive by, you'll see, I have pictures, actually, I took pictures, wanna see them, like, before, if you, like, they are dead, it's easy to clean up, they'll open their entrance, make it look nice, I think, and then we get a basic sign put in.
Yeah, I remember some people complaining about the, the bark and the weeds and all that on that little Meridian, or like...
We, uh, once, we did, we did the, uh, the, uh, the island is all cleaned up, uh, they, not weeds, we need some of those, uh, but going forward, I mean, like, just, I've had this issue with the trees, and those weeds, and everything still tight in those areas, that as you're going through, the salt, they, you don't need to turn it down, it's, it's all over, most of it, for wood, uh, and I tried to possibly figure out, I had that, eventually, I, I, I need, uh, salt contact.
Kind of like, uh, green trees around your court along 76.
Yeah.
Those are all, like, dead too, after, I see.
Yeah, it's funny, the, the Arborvities can't take the salt, but some of the pines, those, those pines are due for some reason, I don't know how they do it.
That makes pretty crappy.
If you see that, they do well, but, everything, you drive them, you, that's not, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, all right. And we're supposed to get our new plow truck soon, huh?
Actually, we, I, that's why we had to not get a fire port, we did make it look good that, uh, Monday.
Oh, cool.
We do have it, um, we are waiting on the pump plow, that is scheduled to arrive in September, um, but everything is set on it, ready to go, and it's literally, it looks good with the pump plow, it's looking up there.
Nice.
Everything on it, everything.
Everything else is on, yeah, just the actual plow, so, uh, we have it on, it's gonna be up.
Truck gotta be lettered?
Sounds good. Geez, we'll have to have a open house for our Public Works Building when you're all gone, with the new truck out there and everything. All right. Um, anything else, David?
Uh, I have another question, that's really all I got.
Anybody? Owen?
Actually, I don't. No, I'm good.
All right.
And what you just told me before the meeting, Chris, that you had to outsource for them sewer repairs?
Yeah, so, uh, we did get first, uh, the floor repairs, the whole way this hole was got out with the pipe, and we ran into the safety issue, as you know, like, there's a lot of water in that area, in underground, if you're having walls, maybe, left and right, I had a couple, that's our, uh, very significant size hole, we got it trashed.
Oh, I see how many truckloads they took out.
And, uh, even trashed back that harbor, having issues with pavements, um, so at that point, we don't have a trash box, and, 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 so, I did, uh, get that one out before repairs were done.
Wait, I mean, um, what kind of timeframe?
About a year long.
And there's what, two or three more to do down that road?
Three, three, plus the one that's open right.
Cause I think you said they're gonna start, start grinding here real soon, aren't they?
They'll be ahead, they, they'll take, um, I mean, like I said, we got it exposed, found the issue, we just couldn't actually get, and they're, were, stayed on the soil and the walls, uh, so they, they should, they should, uh, try to, uh, uh, tomorrow, maybe have to come back Friday or Monday.
Who'd you hire you?
Yeah, stay in my direction.
Was that related to any of the Comcast stuff going on, or?
No, this is, uh, this was sanitary repairs that we had cameraed in, twenty, twenty-one, somewhere in that area, uh, so we're being proactive, it's nothing reckless, like a blowout where someone didn't have service, uh, this is shared based on that type of footage that was already been done proactively prior to the COVID, we know, uh, in a year, we're gonna carry that over.
Yes, yes. All right. Cool. Anything else?
That was it?
All right. Uh, moving on, uh, Treasurer's Report, Karina, did you have anything to add?
No.
All right.
Anybody have any questions about any of the bills or anything? The high one that, that makes it, is gonna be the, uh, one of the final payments to work, so, probably, three hundred and something.
Yeah.
That's why it's like five something.
That's one of the last bills?
Yep, and then, uh, we're gonna have, uh, the container, all, first air conditioning issue that's gonna be fixed, so, before that final one of, like, forty grand is gonna be fixed.
Is that the air conditioning for our tenant over there, the, the dog groomer?
For, uh, the Republic Works Building.
Oh, oh, that's what you're talking about, I thought you were talking about the...
No, no, they're gonna hold a little bit for the final, to make sure that's repaid, I mean, his purchase list is completely, things like that.
Gotcha. All right. Any questions, anybody? Betsy, Austin? All right. All right then. Um, moving on, uh, wastewater, Ion.
Nothing in there is...
Sounds good, and, uh, you, you and I are planning on meeting up on the third, possibly, you gotta square that away with, uh, that one contractor for...
Yeah, we've completed, we've done all the labor, that's, uh, so...
Gotcha. Did, did you tell David about that yet?
Uh, I was watching.
Okay, all right.
I finally heard her back from, hey.
All right. I, I assume we'll invite David and Jeff, if anybody else wants to...
Just, just let me know so we can post it.
Um, oh yeah, if we, if we have more than two trustees going, so...
July when? July 3rd.
July 3rd in the morning, we're shooting for, so he's gotta talk to the...
Okay, shoot us an email for confirmation, uh, thank you.
Might just put it out, just to be safe.
I would.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Anything else to add?
That could be it.
All right then, um, moving on, unfinished business. Item number six, we got a motion to discuss and possible approval of a selection of contractor to perform tennis court restoration repairs.
So move.
Move by Dan?
Second.
Second.
Uh, second by Betsy. And I see all the, all the options again for our tennis courts, um, we, I think we were talking about, there we go.
If memory's good, we were waiting to get the budget figures figured out.
Yeah, and I think we threw in the budget to redo the courts, some fifty thousand, something like that.
Correct, Karina, and we have ten thousand grand now, and hopefully, over the next four more years, we get in order of ten thousand. So we're basically putting the money up front.
Yeah. So, all right then.
Are we gonna approve this without the budget, or how, how, how are we gonna do this?
Bunch of banners?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we've been talking about this for a few months.
Well, no, um, we were directed, the board directed us to get three proposals for rehabilitation of the tennis courts, so we didn't, we did not prepare a formal bid spec, we did not prepare an advertisement, um, so this would have to be awarded by a two-thirds majority.
So we need a resolution, I mean, we need to wait, we need to go to wait until we get it?
Correct.
We wanna do that?
Well, we do, but we don't have the budgets that...
If I can, if I could cut in, I think where we were kind of discussing was, you know, were we gonna do this this year, we had talked about the time that it would take, you know, after the village approved a contractor, how long they would take to get here and get the work done, and, you know, we were comfortable, and if that were to happen in, in July or June, that we could get the work done this year, and I think that was the overall goal of the board, was to try to get the tennis courts rehabbed yet this year. The proposals that we have, there's only one of them that I would, uh, you know, really call a proposal, uh, so I think if the board wants to move forward with this, you know, I think perhaps you direct staff to get a formal proposal from Midwest Sports, who is, who we've recommended, um, and then prepare a resolution for the next board meeting that would authorize the award of the contract, that seems to me to be the, the best way forward.
Is there any reason we wouldn't want to get any other bids?
We already have.
Oh.
It's not formally.
It is a very limited, uh...
It, yeah, there's only a few folks around that actually do this, and getting these proposals was like pulling teeth.
Okay. Did we see copies of those in form?
They're in your packet.
They're in there, okay. American.
Rhino. American, Rhino, and Midwest.
Correct.
Okay, that's what the, the big red, okay.
Yeah, the big red stuff is, uh, that's my edits to help this make sense to you guys.
All right. I didn't catch on to the Midwest Sports proposal, okay, and the Rhino Seal Coat proposal. So... So one was...
They're, they're all grouped, price-wise, they're all grouped pretty close together.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, actually, they're right on top of each other, to be quite honest with you, there's one, uh, if you recall, that we were talking about the crack seal system and, uh, the need to use armor repair out there, because the cracks are so wide, and there is one proposal here that did not include anything for, uh, the armor repair system, so, you know, we, the staff is not comfortable moving forward with them, uh, there was a proposal that estimated about eight hundred feet of armor repair, there's more, like a thousand fifty feet out there, um, so we reached out to Rhino and actually, uh, verified their unit price on the armor repair, and then brought that up to a thousand fifty, uh, lineal feet, so that we are comparing apples to apples, and at the end of the day, Midwest is, uh, is low, uh, but they're not low by very much.
So that's one you're recommending we go into is Midwest?
Correct. And so, if we wanted to move forward, we would get a formal proposal from Midwest, um, one of the things that we have verified with all of the contractors, this is subject to the prevailing wage, um, Midwest Sports does not indicate that in their, uh, email as of right now, but verbally, I've been, I have verified that, I want that in writing to go into the proposal, so I think we would get a formal proposal and then, um, have the village attorney draft a resolution to award the, the contract at the next meeting.
Okay. Was there a total sum on the Midwest one, or do we gotta add those three numbers together?
Uh, so, on the Midwest Sports proposal, the forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars is the rehab cost, but then the board wanted to install two pickleball courts and remove one tennis court, and so there's a cost to install the nets for the, uh, pickleball courts, he actually quoted three nets, but I think we need two, um, so that's something we will verify, you know, in the final proposal.
Okay, so the extra cost was the pickleball courts.
Yep. So if, if it's two nets, it's fifty thousand seven hundred dollars. I guess that's a question for the board, do you wanna just have all new equipment out there, I mean, for an extra three grand, is it, do we...
I got you.
I, I mean, yeah, I mean, that stuff's how old it...
If I, if I could have that, I would say, uh, the actual three grand, based on what I've seen out there with the equipment, probably were filed, do it all with one shot, and make replacement on the existing as well.
Yep.
Gotcha.
We take the nets down every year and put them away in the garage, correct?
Uh, so, the Edgar tech one you used to, um, last two years, they did not get removed, uh, of course, that's something that we have never done, I was actually gonna talk to her, going forward, see if that's something that she wanted also to take care of, then it's, that's kind of rare, we need to have, or, like, I'm saying, or, that stuff is something I, I feel, I mean, I think...
Yeah, it's not a big job to take them down, but put them up.
I had it.
So I think we should just do that out courtesy of the main...
Yeah, I just want all of the, once, all of them, but that is all...
If we push them away, that's gonna make them last a lot longer.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure.
Okay. I think we should just do that.
Yeah, I tend to agree.
Garage is right there, excited. So what do we need to do?
I, I was just curious about the three sets of in-ground net posts, that, that's included with one of the others?
Uh, no, I think... Actually, I think you have to go back to the first memorandum, there's another memorandum before this that summarized everything.
Yeah.
Uh, this one breaks them apart, um, so, on Rhino Seal Co- Seal Coat, the cost to do all that is fifty-four thousand four seventy-five, I've got that, um, circle, right there. And then again, on American, they didn't quote the armor repair, so we're not really even considering them. Oh, I'm sorry, that, Rhino did not quote the armor repair, we're not considering them, American was the one that, keep going, there you go, stop, so, they had quoted thirty-three four, uh, eighty, if, once you start running out the armor repair, um, you get up to fifty-four four, the math is there.
And you, and you were recommending the Midwest one, right?
Correct, both Dave and I are recommending Midwest Sports.
So you had all three of those up there, comes up to seventy-one point two?
Uh, it would be fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars if we replaced all the, all the nets.
But did that say no warranty with it?
Uh, I believe that's a two, it's a two-year on the armor repair, I think that was pretty standard with, with the two foot, they had the armor repair, again, we want to outline that in their, in their quote.
So, so it's missing the, the, the sum total if you buy all three on this sheet?
Yeah, I think we wanna get something that's a little bit more clearer than an email that's marked up with my red letters on it.
Yeah, okay, cause I had all three of them together, it's, it comes up to seventy-one two, so you're saying there's a...
Yeah, but there's, so the seven, ignore the seventeen thousand, that's the cost, if, remember, we talked about just ripping out all the asphalt and replacing it, so if we were to rip out all the asphalt and replace it, their cost to re-mark everything is seventeen thousand five hundred.
Oh, that's what that was.
Yep, so ignore the seventeen five.
I was like, you had the forty-four seven plus nine.
Correct.
Okay. Forgive me, I'm slow, okay, I got it now, okay.
Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
All right. All right, fifty-three seven, okay.
Five fifty-three thousand seven hundred.
All right, so, so, we wait for...
Why don't we get a clear proposal, I'll reach out to the village attorney's office and, um, have a resolution drafted for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I got it now.
All right.
Is it clear for everybody? All right. Thank you. Um, so, we don't need to do anything with this then for now. All right.
You need a table?
Should we just table it over to the table?
Yeah, we, we don't, you don't even have to vote on it.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to, actually, it's pretty disgusting, and you're...
Well, we need to have a, that conference.
But you do organize a resolution.
Next meeting, resolution. Okay, all right then, moving on to new business then.
Gotta get him...
Take your time.
I gotta switch computers.
All right. I wanna, I don't wanna... Confuse the viewer.
Here it is? Hold on.
Oh, we, cold.
Can we do, uh...
Video. Presenting, got you, I see somebody.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, we can hear you now.
Hold on, I'll need to turn it down.
We got a little echo too, but...
Is that better? Better.
Little bit up, please.
All right.
Say testing a couple times for us, please.
It's better.
All right, we'll deal with the echo.
There you go, okay, we need...
All right, do we have a, uh, I, I guess, I guess we don't really need a motion for a presentation for software upgrade, do we? But if we do, why not ask for a motion, let's have a motion to do a presentation, uh, or be a software upgrade with Keegan Nixon. We got a motion by Jeff and...
Second.
Second by Bruce, all right, all right, here we go.
You're on, Keegan.
I'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank you all for... I've been continuing to listen to the conversation. I've been working on the talk right now. I've been working on this for about 10 years. Now, I'm in the last seven, so we're going to get behind and initiate it. And we're doing our plans in Illinois. I did notice in the exact... Our state, so... On today, uh, I'm about to agree with you. Yes, yes. I see, or rather implement the BSA effect. I mean, there seems to be some folks in the room. Um, so just by background on the company, we'll talk about the technology that we're proposing, and that's as well. Um, so for those of you that are a little bit newer, maybe you're not familiar with BSA, we're one of the leading providers of ERP software in the public sector. We've been in this business for over 30 years, and we have a 99% client retention rate, meaning lots of municipality choose to support with BSA. They really have high... For over the last 35 years, we've seen solve many different challenges. We've helped local businesses overcome financial challenges like providing world-class accountings, better reports, and what more. Many of our clients are new technology, and I help them with a goal or innovation processes. There's this security that really offer a better experience. Those are some of the things that we've been working on and seeing over the years. Our response to the demand that we see in the market for things like this are cloud platforms. The Village today is using BSA's app that for desktops. It's an on-premise client service system that we released back in 2008 with about 16 years old at the point. We do initially recommend, considering our cloud system, we released it back in 2021. It offers significant technological improvements and really a more secure environment than on-premise to traditional. I don't know if we're each of these just for the time of the whole items that I've highlighted are the high availability and high reliability. So we have a 99.99% uptime with our cloud system. So basically, as long as you have a connection and up and running, you'll have access to it. It also is a much more secure system as well. So we all have heard about ransomware, right? If you don't hear about it in conferences, maybe we've heard of a neighborhood that I have neighborhood, right? And so this is a really good way to improve the security posture against things like ransomware and malware and whatnot. And the other one I'd like to highlight is accessibility and mobility, right? Being able to access from here to an open environment. So do this from home, from an iPad, from the field. You need to be able to invoke or service or things like that, the ones that they use in field work. So those are some of the big highlights. Migrating from on-premise system allows for really new ways to realize ROI. So before ROI, they had meant, you know, when am I making back my initial investment in SaaS systems, there are opportunities to not only save on costs or offsets and costs, but also to improve productivity, improve your security posture, and what more. So in terms of cost savings with SaaS systems, really allow the public sector to reduce overall IT expenses, such as your physical server, you know, reducing the size of your server, or maybe you could eliminate it, right? Maybe we're not replacing that server every so many years, or spending money on maintenance and storage and securing and whatnot. As far as productivity goes, the system is always modern and updates automatically with no manual clicks required by the user. So it will always be running the most recent of BSA with the latest security patches. I was talking to a customer recently, actually, they have about five of our modules, and they were looking at creating cloud and talking about how much time they spent updating the different modules, right? Because for those of you that went out the update, right, and initialized that, you know, it takes some time. And we did a quick calculation with them and estimated that it costs about $2,500 a year just to enable and initialize that update. This is a mock, right? You can't use this, and there's that time in your ERP. So that is something that we thought was interesting. Another one related to productivity improvement is single database architecture. So today, the Village has separate databases for each of your BSA modules, which creates data items. In the cloud, you'll have this, you'll have a single source of truth. So you're really breaking down those barriers to your information. It's going to improve reporting, improve ease of use, and really allow you to view more data in a single period without needing to open up different screens than those. The third one, probably the most important, is days' world of risk protection. We do geo redundant backups of your data that occur automatically to two different regions in the United States. The primary data center is in Virginia, and the backup data center is in Arizona. If one site were to go down because of a natural disaster like that, which has not happened today, but that were to happen, it takes us less than two hours to look at your alternative site. So it's a great comparison. Some other things we have in cooperation with Microsoft Azure, we have intelligent threat monitoring, which is like having a team of people on staff identifying and neutralizing cyber threats as they arise. We also support all type actor authentication through Azure and dual role interaction. It also singles sign on through Azure, so it allows access only by corporate people and not the hackers. Also blacklist our IP address, any, anything outside of the United States. So if you're in exterior or if you're in, you're just not in the United States, all right, you can't access it. That I mentioned earlier, ransomware is probably the single biggest threat facing the public sector today, and that really happened over the last couple of years, especially with the leading drivers behind the push to move to cloud systems, both in the public sector and private sector. BSA, we're doing it ourselves, right? We're exchanging a lot of our physical phone systems and physical servers or email servers in exchange for cloud platforms. So there is, when you're talking about migrating from an on-premise system to a cloud system, it's always a core consideration, a cost and ownership, right? And so I did my best to kind of break this down here. There are some unknowns that I have, right? I don't watch the Village send us a server on IT expenses related to that server supporting BSA, right? I don't know if it's an aspect of every policy in place today or what that costs to, but typically those are all things that add on to employees for the annual fee to BSA. And so today, we emphasize even the maintenance knowledge. So really all that is is for support and for periodic updates, right? With cloud, while the annual fee increases, that also includes, as we mentioned previously, and we'll get it in some more detail throughout the presentation, but I wanted to at least point that out. When we look at the two charts here, these are real numbers. I also wanted to point out that the $25,000 there on the right, that actually includes $8,000 in new software, for the sort of building department and online current applications. If you wanted to do, you know, apples to apples comparison, just certainly comparing what you have today and not that, to what you have to have in cloud minus the new ads, it only obviously has to decrease, which is pretty good, very well. There is another slide here comparing the differences between that and a cloud, and I go closer each of these. The two that I wanted to highlight, they're middle, toward the middle of, they're background reporting and processing. That's a big one. So you may notice that if you run heavy reports or heavy process exports or have you, you may find that the system locks up and you can't really use it. In cloud, when you run a report or heavy process, that actually gets sent off to the background, and it processes it back. It can be ordered, like taken payment of the counter, things like that. That's a huge, that's a big difference. That's part of what makes this a multi-headed system, right? Having multiple resources that we pull from. And then the only other one that I wanted to highlight is the unlimited storage. So with our cloud system, our storage capacities are completely unlimited, so that includes attachments, I think, of all of your data. We also can call all of the data that you have in that app today, so that will all be there accessible. Anvil references already on the line. I believe I included this slide. I sent this to Katie, so you should have this, but the ability would really build her in, we can get more info, but all the good places to speak to. If you want more, we actually have our entire list out on our website. Feel free to reach out to whoever you like. If there's a particular community you'd like to get next to it, I'd be happy to do that. As far as cloud and app and SaaS, we have 230, 235 places that are already live on cloud, and we've got 140 units that are in various stages of their cloud projects. So they've been funded, executed a contract earlier this week, all the way to a unit that will lie on cloud edge. So it's a pretty big range of that, those units. If you attend the IML conference, the US have IC and AJF away or have you, like we got earlier, probably told about ransomware. A lot of times I hear the phrase, it's not a matter of if you get that good at one. Actually, I also remember recently, we go, we go today, I have hit with ransomware, they're using our app system, and their server and their BSA environments have actually been downed. Other one, I had it back in 2021, BSA ransomware, so the threat is, it's out there, we see it frequently being offered higher. It is a big driver behind making, unfortunately, to make ways to take the switch up. Half the day they've been impacted by it, and I think that's what's going to be happening to places that recently experienced this. But over 10% of our base is now on cloud, and we expect that to increase exponentially in the coming years as other states have made a threat. As far as the implementation goes itself, it's barely handoff to the village. For those of you that, hey, remember the original implementation in 2016, that was probably quite evolved, right? Turning data from a non-BSA system, lots of implementation, lots of training, right? That's a pretty big change from here to another. This is simply, right? We do 90% or more of the left. We'll need your help with some project, and really basically, and we just ask you to be present. We do some of the training, the training takes a week for the upgrade side, and then we also have some of the basically on per case, or a week or two half of that, so you can have access to it. But the lift for this is far less than what you would have originally. All told, the timeline is about three to six months. It depends on what your preferences are and how the project ends, and we'll see a little of a 0.5 in three to six months, or even a 5 in two months. They'll get all the time. I know today, this year's an election year, so we have to navigate that a little bit back with primaries in the general. So everybody's sensitive to that, but mostly 0.5 and then three to six months. That's what I wanted to cover at the very beginning. Happy to talk through the proposal with everybody at this point, or simply do questions or review.
I've got a question. The total cost implement, the upgrade to the cloud would be $74,000, is that the quote? All the expenses?
Yeah, so we can pull that up. So the total cost, $75,000. There, that also a new purchase of the building department module, that's permitting code enforcement, planning zoning, projects, inspections, and so forth. It also includes BSA online, which is our contractor or resident-based module, but allows residents or contractors to apply for online. So some of that $75,000.
Okay, and that quote is good until October, at least 120 days?
It was dated in March, so after 120 days of March.
Got it, thank you.
This is a system. This is the software that we use. What we want to do is add modules to get the cloud level. Any questions, Doc?
I have a lot of questions, so you guys go first.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
I was just curious if I understood before, the upgrade modules is, which is the first item on the list, 16, 7, 25, is that to upgrade the current modules? Is that what that is?
Correct, yep. So that's 16, 7, 2, 5, the software fee, and that's also the annual maintenance fee. Your first year will actually be a little bit less than seven, because we prioritize your .mt, your current thing, against your first year cloud cost. So your first year will be a little bit less than that. It depends on your whole life timeframe relative. Your building timeframe, right, will be basically something that we don't have with that, so that's the software costs for hosting, security, servers, everything, all the apps.
Okay. And then, and the new modules line is what you had mentioned, there were some new modules that were suggested to be added. Is that, those couple items you mentioned are inside that 59, 35?
Yeah, let me, go ahead. I can, I'll share my screen here so I know we're all looking at the same thing. Hopefully everybody can see this, okay?
I'm here. Getting better. There we go, it's readable. Yeah, it's readable, okay. Oh, that's, all right, good enough there.
Yeah, so, yes, it's broken down with great precision. So the two is our building department, which again is permitting percent planning and zoning sections, and then the BSA online, this is, you know, resident, all the basic...
I have a question. Kriya, like when we do, like for code enforcement, building department, that would be all entered? Would that be entered from BNF, or would that be entered from our office? They can put it in.
And I have a question, can I jump on that too? So is BNF currently familiar with this software? Is that what they use in other places, or is this going to be new for them too? Okay, so that's something that we'll have to have as a takeaway question? Okay. But if it's, if it's building permits, and there's issue with building permits, wouldn't they have access to go in and make notes and things like that on those building permits and action items? So the question is, is in the building permits, there's, obviously there's a process for a building permit. It's issued, and then if there's issues with the building permit, or there's stops or problems, rather than just uploading a document, is there a way, you know, would our code enforcement group have access to make action items in this building department software?
They certainly, if you wanted to grant the permission to, if you noticed that it appeared it was issued, but maybe something was wrong with what happened inspection, right? And you needed to put a software order. I don't, this system can produce anything like software orders. As far as users can have access to one function, the security is quite robust in cloud, so you actually have field by field of the security that you can active to. So you wanted to have a code enforcement, have the ability to review permits with a software order, right? It certainly can do that.
And then how is that security set up field by field? So what is the request and how is that confirmed?
So...
Typically, you do it like in groups, or you have a security role? And so how do you do it that defined?
Yeah, it is rule-based security.
Okay.
We have security privileges, basically, and this, whoever is assigned to this role can this rule to X and Y, right? And then we also have record restriction, which is where you simply, maybe a certain person cannot see, right? Or maybe they only see code enforcement, or they have, maybe they can only do recommendations, right? We can restrict views as well.
So that would be like an unconstrained and a constrained role still? Or it would be a group at that point in time? So would it be group-based by module, and then role-based by the individual constrained or unconstrained?
Yes, yeah, it would be role-based.
So no group-based, completely role-based? Because usually, group, you know, group basis by the module, and then you do role within the module. So if you have a group that has access to this module, and then they would do role? Or do you have to assign all the roles for all the modules to everyone?
So, yeah, this is part of the way that we assign a role, and that role can look to any of the modules, right? So our higher, our lower, and then like, for example, you need to see certain things and do certain things on our, you're not redoing that role in these receivables, and then redoing that role in a timetable, and then redoing again in building, right? That's actually how we're saying about that, is you actually have something in each module, and each one has its own security permissions. We do a role, add role thresholds, add different modules that they have access to. You also can get more than just a role. If you have, maybe let's say you have a police chief, and then you have that police chief, and maybe the deputy police chief just can't see patricities, that sign of, say, an odd one, maybe the police chief can see patricities, but the deputy cannot. Maybe they have the same role, right? But that deputy could also come by. So you can take it down to either a starting role, or you just not have it, you can use
So do we change our hierarchy and set it up with you then, in the beginning, for the cloud-based piece of it?
Yeah.
Or is that preset up in BSA, and we have to match to your hierarchy in your constrained and unconstrained roles? Is it a preset up, or do we have to set it up? Do we have to tell you what we want, or do you have those roles preset up?
No, we work with you on it. There are rules, but actually, to appropriate.
Right, but do you have them? Do you have, do you have a base set of roles? I'm not communicating well. Do you have a base set of roles, or do we have to come and say, this is the roles that we want, and you set them up? Or do you say, this is what we normally use? These are the roles that are set up in the system, what do you need?
Yeah, so if we get a conversation here, we ask you, you know, who are our users that we need to set a role for, right? What's their permissions need? We work with you on it, right? We don't, we don't just create new predefined rules or stuffs, right? This is very, very flexible. We also do have, I'm sure we can provide you some examples of ways that we've done other municipalities too, if you wanted some type of, I can have that.
Right, I mean, we're small enough that sometimes predefined roles are easier to use than us going through and trying to figure that out. That's where I'm kind of trying to go with that. But then, I mean, security can be, can be, it's not just flat line, it can be all over the place. And so that's why I want to make sure that we understand that security as we're doing it, and can communicate to you the roles that we need.
I'm going to pretty much set up however we want with your help.
Right, but we have to understand, we have to understand that. And that's, that's part of the issue. So, I'm just going to keep going. So you noted that you have MFA, and you use SSOs? Do we currently have SSOs in place? So we don't, so we would have to set up SSOs? What's the MFA that you use? Is it like Duo Mobile, or what's the MFA? What's the authenticating factor that's used?
Yeah, so you could either use Duo Mobile, we actually do that in BSA, it's a great, great problem. So you can use Duo Mobile, or you can use Microsoft Azure, all that.
What comes with it, and are those additional costs?
They're, they're not a big cost. If you already have like, sort of.
We don't, we don't use, we're not using SSOs today, or MFA, we don't have an MFA.
Yeah, I don't know what Duo's pricing would be, or you can handle that, but as far as integrating.
But Microsoft comes with it, that's?
Correct.
Okay, so Microsoft comes with it, and it uses SSOs?
So as if though, you can, you can use it if you want, and you don't have to, it's an option, but that's hands-free.
Yep, yep, okay. So then you talked about upgrades. Upgrades don't cost, once you buy the initial modules? Or they do cost every year? Or is it just a standard fee every year after that? And then how often are those upgrades? How often do you go out and, and, you know, do you have, like a community that says, hey, I'd really like this to be fixed, this isn't working, we'd like this? Do you have anything like that?
Yeah, so, that's a great question. So currently, we don't have a customizing community per se, but that's actually, I don't know, it has to be released toward the end of this calendar. So the tool is public facing portion, or CRM, and it actually all. And it does allow for different communities to communicate with each other, right? So question to, and then maybe, you know, the villagers go here, the villagers or something like that, maybe they chime in, right? That's also a very good way to cross the, into, you know, what places are trying to do today, it's just a pay-to-pay system, but it's pretty, it's pretty exciting.
So then how do you handle tickets for those issues? Do you have a ticketing system, and how, and do you have a pay, if we have, if we have an item that needs to be fixed, how do you handle it in the cloud with a ticket? And how, when, is there a level of ticketing that we pay for that says, you know, you have a response time of 24 hours, or you have a response time of 48 hours? What's the ticketing process for the BSA product?
Yeah, so it's the same for cloud as it is for cloud. If you wanted to, I could send you our, all that in great detail. But all of our response times, any support request within an hour. And it depends on the severity, right? Of the, of the thing, if something we're able to do, scheduled release or return, like right in the next update, right? You know, if it's a, if we're overhauling something, right? Maybe it's larger, so it pays a longer restor, and so all kind of depends on the severity of the bug, right? But our SLAs outline that in much greater detail.
Okay, next question. You talk about, in the quote, you talk about OCR? Is that OCR for payables or receivables? And then, it also does talk about barcode scanners? And is that something that we're looking at doing? Yeah? If you don't have enough invoices, OCR doesn't really pay for itself, it's good to have them scanned in. But when you're doing OCR, it's not, it's not a perfect process yet. Yeah. So is the OCR, is that include, so it talks about the custom OCR scan line for customization? That's for receipts, I'm assuming? So they can use a barcode scanner? Yeah, so the question is, I mean, there's two things here. OCR can be for payables, it can also be for receivables. It goes, the payable will automatically key in key fields, but those are not perfect and must be reviewed by a person. That's why I'm saying, I mean, yeah, I mean, when you get 1,000 invoices, like we do a day, yeah, makes sense. So is the scan line for, and the barcode readers, are those, those are for receivables? Would you suggest, and do we have a lockbox? Or do you get everything here? So they get everything here? So maybe, I mean, maybe we need to review if a lockbox makes more sense for those kinds of things, and put a scan on. Online. Yeah, so that's the. Right, right, well, for a lockbox, they're not as expensive as, it depends on the level of service that you put in the lockbox.
A lot of times, hey, with a lock, part of the reason why that line is in there of the lockbox, it's, it's a lot of the time that's a customization, it's actually a lot of, if there's more available than they need here, so it's pretty rare, there's anything that's required to have that.
Okay. How many checks do we get a month? How many checks do we get a month? Then a lockbox makes sense. So then it talks about the online payments, so I'm guessing that that's a process that you own, because it doesn't give us an option to choose our online payment provider? Who is that provider? And how often is it paid out to change to this cloud piece? That's what you're currently using? And who's the provider of that? Right, so, so do we pay them, or do we pay BSNA for it? Okay.
We used to buy a long time ago, we would spend about eight grand a year, wasn't it? That was coming out of, it was before you. It was like eight to 10 grand a year in processing, to relative pay. That's why we switched this, to the.
Right, and then how, how often do you get your money? So it's 24 hours paid out? Received ACH, or wire? Let's talk about testing. For the initial changeover to the cloud, how many test instances, I mean, what's your, what's your process for the test instances versus production instance when it's finalized? Yeah, so sometimes, so there's always, so you sometimes have multiple test instances, and they're, and then they're updated from changes. So there's a point in time when, okay, this is the change, these are the, this is the testing we've done, this is what we want, we want to bring it over to production, then you're doing more testing. So you just, do they have one test instance, and then we load that to the production instance once it's finalized? Is that how you do it? Or is it multiples and multiple levels?
Yeah, so, very much, we can share, and others are there. We're converting our own data to our own data, right? So we do a, we do one happens, one, you know, live environment, and then we go live after we take changes and do final extraction there. That's pretty standard for upgrade.
So the. Let me ask one quick question, before you keep going. So that $16,000, there's no changes in that? There's just, it's just really considered an upgrade, you're taking the data from here to here, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, correct, it's basically, I mean, we could do some changes for you within, right? It's very, very kind of fragile.
So you typically suggest that people should move to the cloud first, and then add modules afterwards as they work on them? Or do you, or should it be one big thing, which kind of seems like scary, because you're still, you know, from the move over, you're going to be testing, in your test instance, you're going to be testing those security roles? You're going to be doing, you know, and what's the confirmation that those security roles are working? What's the confirmation that, you know, that the payments are working, and that, you know, all of those things are working?
Yeah, so, I think there are a few questions, so I'm just going to first, you do the data approach, or do you recommend upgrading first, and then adding on later? Answer that one first, you do recommend upgrading first? So we have four, like running in, so that's, that's the way to do it. Mostly because, the other reason too, is that this is a faster implementation, right? Usually with implementation, like a building department, let's say, usually building kind of patient, it takes a little bit of hard time, figuring out, or bigger setup. We do recognize what type of, and then creating on the others, for time. And so we do all of the data verification and validation, we set up any time you have a module, up to users' review, and we can, so hopefully, okay, I'll.
You did. My last question, I know you're all excited about that. The payroll question is about, so will they log in to the cloud system to log their time? Or what's the expectation there? And this may be more a question for Karina, if she understands how the system works today? And then, would they have the ability to go in and look at those hours to make sure they were entered correctly? And then will they see their W2s and enter their W4s on this? Or is that all going to be manual still as well? And that's the expectation to continue? Okay, and then? Sure.
So, if our payroll system is cloud, it also comes from our employees elsewhere. So they will be able to plug in and queue their tech in through their W2 and W3, even request any W4 changes if you wanted them to. So there is portion of that included in.
Okay, and then, I would like to understand the project management module at some point that's being requested, but I don't think that that needs to be right now, Karina and I can get together, and that can be explained to me at some point in time, what the added benefit to that is. So I'm good. So I'm good.
Can you please mention the purpose order modules up there? Or is what happens, where's the travel?
Uh, yes, so I do need to update the... Help me catch that A. So I'll get that updated and back. EO is, price very simply. Make sure to update that. And then I missed the part of your past question there of the travel.
Right. For the new module, do you prefer to have people come here on site?
That's our, yeah, it's, that's our preference to do implementation and training on site. Just a little bit, it's a matter of years. We can do this, S side, might be in a classroom. Train the trainer, depends on what our project managers want to do and what they would like to do. We do recommend it. We could do it remotely, but I think we would get so much more out of it than was there.
I want to make sure that it's additional funding.
And that's for the new implementation? Are you talking about training for even the cloud? Okay, so that's only for building the code? Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keegan.
Thank you.
Guess we need to discuss this further. Taking any action on this tonight, I presume?
If possible, action.
Didn't he say, didn't he say he had to do some resubmit?
Well, and we would need to discuss what pieces of it we definitely wanted to do too. I don't know that, I mean, he literally said, you know, do the upgrade first. If, if we do, if we do that this year or if we wait a year.
Yeah, the upgrade itself, was it the $16,000?
Yeah, yeah. Right. Let's wait and see.
So do you want to bring it back? Get the proposal, have Karina mail it to us?
Yeah, and after we get the proposal, we...
Probably move it, put it back on to the, to I, okay?
Yeah, if we get, if we get the other information.
All right, Karina.
I also want to know what BNF uses and if they're used to using it.
They use their own internal system. Yeah, it's a thing on their iPads. They enter in like for inspections and stuff, approved, not approved, the notes. They literally do it from an iPad. We looked at going with them about a year and a half ago, two years ago. It was, it was their own system that they built. Too new and it wasn't going to work with what we are needing. But I'm sure they have, use BSNA. I don't, but...
With the amount of permits we have, would it be productive to add these modules for it?
I think so. We're doing it by hand right now.
Can you hear me? Hear me, Carrie?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. More than the number of permits, we're using better tracking. So, I mean, the system's going to give us a better way to track, add notes, keep track of what was done, what was said, who said what, rather than our spreadsheet.
And then when you need to print something out, it's quick click.
Well, and we have, and we have easy to get at history.
And employee requests for having to go physically grab the paper and then...
All right, so we'll put it back on the 10. We'll reach out, make sure we get all that information and send it out to her, or Carrie, send it out to us.
You know, we do this in a couple of years.
So the main modules we need is code enforcement. So first up is the code to call, right?
Right.
Upgrade.
So we do stair stepping it, you go live, bring in this module, bring in this module. Is that going to be one total cost in the beginning and knowing we're getting them stair steps? Or pay for the go live, you pay for each module as you add?
Well, you probably pay for four months and then you take two modules.
Oh, never mind. Got you. Yeah, I was just wondering.
What does she estimate around how much?
Eighty-five.
So the first thing we do, we go to the cloud, then we bring in the modules. One is, but that's an upgrade, everything you have now, right?
Right, that, that will happen in all...
All at once.
Otherwise, you know, you solve the modules, everything, close module, one module at a time.
What's the security development one? Security development, which is security development. What was the other module? Security development.
That's the building and code.
That's part of, okay.
So it's three, building and code, code enforcement, and then anything selling.
But I think, I think there's still some discussion to be had on, he's got a lot of stuff in here about, you know, you know, what, the OCR and, and the, you know, the scanners and all that. And I think we need to really break that down, what you're really going to do and what you're really going to use. And, and should you use, go to a lockbox instead? And, and kind of review some of those things before we kind of do the final decision on, I mean, I can see going to the cloud and adding MFA with, with, you know, that's, that's, should be done at some point in time here. But then talking about exactly what you're going to use and how you're going to use it, I think does need to have some discussion.
Right. Because you need down to get a full chart and what products you need. And you could assume earlier, you are going to...
Right, right. You should look at a five-year plan on where you're going to be. And, and I agree with that and understand the numbers of how many checks you get in, how they're done. Are we, you know, does it make sense for you to have a scanner because they bring them in and you're going to scan them? And scanners aren't that expensive, a handheld scanner for a payment. But then should, but also a lockbox and loading the lockbox file is, is really handy. So, I mean, if you get enough checks, we should look at that too because the cost to have lockbox is not that expensive. So I think we really need to kind of look at where you're at, where we anticipate you being, and what, what pieces you really want to use now and later. I agree.
All right. Anything else? All right. Moving on. Number eight. Oh, no, we, we can skip number eight. We kind of did both those together, so we'll, we'll just, we'll just pass over eight. Move on to item number nine. We got a motion to discuss and approve ordinance 2024, number to be, to be determined in ordinance of the Village of Poughkeepsie Grove, Illinois, amending Title I, Administration, Chapter Six, for village officers and employees, amending Section 1-6-6 salaries in Chapter Six, Article A, Village Clerk, Section 1-6A-2 dot 1, salary to the Village of Poughkeepsie Grove Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
A motion by Betsy. Motion by Betsy, saying my Jeff.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
And what is your motion to amend?
I, I was, yeah, sorry. I didn't know if anybody could hear me. I would like to amend Subparagraph B to $10,000.
You want to amend what?
The mayor's salary to $10,000.
From 15 to 10?
Yes.
We got a motion by Owen to reduce the village's president's salary in the proposed amendment here from 15 to 10,000. The second by Jeff. Any discussion on that? Would you like to, got any?
Sure. I've got, I mean, this applies to everything, not only just the motion, so I would like to, sure.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Um, I, I would like to say something. I would have a comment. It applies to the motion in total, so not just this, but yes.
Go ahead.
So I just like to say that I'm all for saving taxpayers money that could be used for infrastructure, water, sewer, and our, it just appears to me that this ordinance is used to fund another layer of bureaucracy and, and already complicated government of red tape that we have. And Don, you've got a large broken campaign promise, you're donating your salary back and not cutting the salaries and suggesting employees in another meeting should pay more in their health insurance. It's, I just find that hypocritical. I did, I disagree, Don, with the, with you and the majority of the board over the past few months that keep saying that our job is to show up at board meetings and read emails. I really feel our residents want to see us all involved and giving back whenever we can. And they think they really want to listen to us and they need our assistance navigating the complex red tape of, of government. They like seeing us out. They like engaging with us. So these cuts are nothing more than political, which, you know, you've, you've cost the taxpayers, you know, your salary that you were going to donate back and now we're going to be here. So that's just all I have to say about this. But I'm all for, you know, putting this back in infrastructure, but not in a bureau, another layer of bureaucracy.
Are you, are you done?
I am done.
All right. So you still, you're still got your motion? And we got a second on your motion to reduce the village president's salary from 15 to 10. Okay. Any other comment on that? All right then.
It was 30. It was 30 before Nitzel. Yeah.
And you notice the, the stipend is removed there too, Mr. Castillo.
I did.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I did.
All right.
So what exactly are we going to do? Did you want to do, you want to take this type away, move it to 10,000? And trustees, what do you want to do with it?
I didn't make a motion to change any of that.
Okay, made no motion.
No, we probably should, if you want to change any of it, probably should just vote on the amendment first and then the motion, if there's any discussion or any other changes.
All right. Okay, if there's any, is there any other commentary on the motion by Owen?
Well, just that, so just to clarify, if you're talking about Section 2, Paragraph B, and then the third paragraph in there that's underlined, right? Changing that from 15,000 to 10,000, it says payable in equal installments every two weeks, which shall include the village president's role as liquor commissioner. I would just say that you, you would specify that would include whatever the amount is for the commissioner. So what is it, $10,000 or something?
No, there's no, it's all included in one salary.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm recommending that you specify that the, like, if it includes, the 10,000 includes 1,000 or whatever the amount is that's broken out.
It was 600. Wasn't it 600 for liquor commissioner a year?
But whatever the amount is, I would just say that you would recommend it or that you would specify that. It doesn't have to be on top of it, it could be included, but just include what that number is.
Let's say 9,400 and 600, that's what you're saying, right?
Right, or whatever the amount is, right.
What was this?
Because it's a statute or cap to the amount that you can pay for liquor commissioner. So I think you should specify in here what it is and go with a little bit.
Okay.
Move any red tape?
And also, I think you need to amend the dates here because this is after May 1st and you can't change a public official's compensation during your term of office. In order to municipal code, you will, the officers that are up, whose terms expire in 2025, their terms would expire the first regular special meeting in May after the receipt of the proclamation of vote results from the county. And we don't know when that is. So there's an argument that May 1st is still in the term. So I think what you should say is for that part and then the part below that where you talk about the trustees' compensation, following the installation of municipal officers after May 1st, 2025, because that's the date the term will take effect. But we don't actually have a precise date as to when that is because of the way it's written.
Do you want to lay this off or do I have her bring it back in your ordinance?
I have, I have one typed up here. I typed it up because I had another suggestion too. I mean, if you want to change the 10,000, we'd have to like write that in there. But my other recommendation is that, first of all, with respect to your ordinances in the future, instead of just titling them by the sections of the code that you're amending, I think you should specify what topic it is so the public knows, so that this would be about compensation. But I think we should add a section, other than the compensation specified above, there will be no other compensation to elected officials such as a stipend, health insurance benefits, or participation in IMRF. Because sometimes, this is something we've just learned from other municipalities where these problems come up, where people say, well, that was the salary, but we thought we also got health insurance or we thought we also had IMRF. I just would suggest that you include a sentence like that so it's clear that this is the total compensation. So I made my recommended changes in a draft here that I can pass out if the board's interested.
Or you could just send them out to us if you like.
Well, the problem was I didn't, I didn't get the board pick until like 3:00 today. So I, I just like did this and then hopped in my car to come here. Because we're still working out, you know, how are we getting the information for the meetings? And normally, if we're preparing the ordinances, we would get them.
You want to know where.
Exactly.
How did you get this?
Your past attorneys, they can figure it everything.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Yeah, it just wasn't, it wasn't emailed to us.
We just need to add them to the...
Put that on mute for a minute, Owen.
Well, I was about to, the liquor commissioner, $500 annually.
So you can change that. I mean, they can, yeah. Yeah. Do you need another one? I have another.
No, I got it.
So that would be 10,000, which shall include, I think you would just put whatever you want to do, 500 for the village president's role as liquor commissioner?
Yeah. So 500 for the village liquor commissioner, 9,500 for?
We leave that at 10,000 because it includes.
Oh, okay.
Including the 500.
Okay. Gotcha.
So if, if all of those changes are okay, subject to any other changes that the board might have, you just make a motion to approve this as amended.
Okay, so.
Okay, all right, Owen.
Kind of sort of.
Okay. Yes, Austin.
I would so move as suggested by the village attorney, based on whatever view of the revised proposed ordinance, including lowering the president's salary to 10,000 as we dispense.
Okay. I think we, if Owen recalls his
Yeah, if he recalls his amendment, then you can vote on the original one as amended.
And then Austin included the 10,000 in that motion.
That bill, Owen?
So what are we doing in the, in the change? We're just splitting it up and saying what it, everything is?
Right. It could be 10,000, but it's got to also say it includes liquor commissioner. 500. So it'll say mayor, 9,500, liquor commissioner, 500, total 10,000.
Yep.
For that section.
Okay.
Okay, so we still have to. With the amended version by Carrie Lynn. Did you have something to say?
Okay, should I just amend mine to reflect the same thing, then, or would that be easier?
We, I think we want to withdraw your motion and then go with the other motion.
Yeah, if you withdraw your motion, we'll just make one motion to adopt it all as amended, which includes what you were doing.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
And that's just for that section. Then we go on to discuss the rest.
Right.
So then, we have the amended version by Carrie Lynn on the table here, and the motion by Austin was to adopt that, including the $10,000 language that was discussed.
That's correct.
That's the current motion on the table. And do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Oh, Betsy seconded that. Okay. Now we have that, that larger amendment on the table here. Any more questions about that, those motions, or that motion? All right. Roll call on the amendments.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Owen Costanza.
Yes.
Betsy Straw, yes. Jeff Goings.
Yes.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
All right. The salary reduction amendment is approved. Now, do we, is there any further discussion now as the rest of it?
For the trustees, I think you presented, out of your six, there was like one, I don't know if you've seen Chris about she brought up some good points about it. There's more to being a trustee. I don't really think we should change it. In my opinion, it doesn't affect me, but I think that she was about, there's more to just coming here and reading emails when you're not here. There's participation, which I feel some of us participate more than others, which is fine. It's everyone's call. It might be tier people, like she mentioned. I'm not going to read what, what else she did comparison. The only one I really compared to us was to Noah Kingston, and size, and payment. You popped up too.
Cherry Valley.
There was been Cherry Valley. Good job to you guys. I mean, don't really have a say, but I think we don't want to discourage people. It does take time to get here. For those who do work on our jobs, compensation is not outrageous. I don't think it's true hiring of that nature. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and I mean, there is a lot more to it, a lot more reading. You know, I've gone and taken meetings with, with the attorneys and other people. I have an open door policy. Have people come knock on my door, you know? And I said, talked to them quite a while, we've taken phone calls. I'm not saying leave it where it's at, you know? I'm not opposed to reducing it at all. Honestly, when I did this, I thought this was voluntary, like, that's what I'd like, signing and zoning. So I give it all back to the government anyways. I think I collect $3 a check. But I don't see it fair that any, to the next administration, whoever runs and wins, I think there's more work to it than, like Jeff said, the $100 per meeting. Like I said, it doesn't affect me. I, I would have done it for free, but I don't think it's fair for the next people that follow to take that big of a hit. Like I said, I'm not opposed to lowering it, but that's a, that's a pretty big hit for what, what it is now. And like, so that's just my opinion.
Also, with the mayor's position, the mayor's salary is dependent on whether you have hours here. Don, you don't have hours here. Make yourself available. I've heard people reach out to you, say they've gotten hold of you, I've heard people say they reached out to you and you, they've got no response. It depends on the person who's in the position for the role as village president, as a trustee. It's, it's not just come to a meeting. There's, there's a lot. I spend my time, I go around the village, I do a monthly thing, I communicate with David when I find things, I call him, I do a list, these are things, hey, people dumping over here, this needs to be this, this, assign me, pre-sign. I drive around, I take my time. It's more than just coming here and reading emails. I mean, God knows, for the last three years, and I'm not trying to be mean, we've got a lot of emails, a lot of emails more than normal, that's for sure. But I think the trustee patient you left alone. If you guys want to lower it, it's your call. I'm not opposed to it, but I think it's kind of low for what, and it's been tier people, because once they come here, we get, we get overwhelmed already. People don't want to borrow anything. My opinion. Depends on the person's position.
Leaving that last one you sent out earlier, right before the meeting, I think it will believe those. Roscoe Rockton?
Mm-hmm.
They were at 200, which that puts them at roughly 48, if they don't do any other, like, committee meetings or whatever. Right? I see that as viable. I mean, like I said, that, that puts it at 48. Because it was at five, they went to 55, you know, prior to us.
Yeah, I know the jump for that.
Yeah, so I mean, that you're, you're not, you're at least bringing it back to the five, and, you know, you're knocking another 200 off. To do the 200 at least, per meeting, and then the same thing with the committee meetings. It was Rockton. They had two. Just right before the meeting. Rockton right here.
So I like to make a motion for my changes.
It's about $100 per meeting.
You're allowed to make a motion.
To clarify what was standing.
He hasn't made it clear.
We can lower it to 5,000. I did not vote for the increase. Many first years I worked, I was a trustee, I wanted to be paid properly. I never asked for it back. So I'll make a motion to.
I'll second.
5,000 for trustees.
I'll second.
So 5,000, you're, not, not, not per meeting, huh?
You really think how it's been.
Makes it easier on your clerk.
All right, we got a motion to pay the trustees more, $5,000 a year, by Jeff, and a second by Owen. Any other discussion? Yes, Austin?
I think it makes more sense to pay per meeting.
Yeah, and the county board members make $65 per meeting, and several.
And that's any meeting in the county that they attend.
That's correct. And that's, and this, and I propose the $100 per any meeting. And a lot of other communities are very similar to that.
No, we're not the county. We are Poplar Grove.
You can look at the other, the other examples that I gave you. And $100 is right in the middle.
Well, and we had the two, like I said, even the 200. You don't know how involved. Are they going out, like I said, taking meetings? Are they talking to their constituents? You know? Jeff's very involved. I mean, you just don't know what they're doing to base that on. And like I said, I'm not against lowering it at all, but I feel it's not fair to the next administration coming in to take that big of a hit. I mean, you're, you're cutting it more than in half. You know, what's that, come out to 24 from 55? That's a big ding. Like I said, I'm not opposed to lowering. I think if you want to do a per meeting, I still think 200 is better than the 100, and that's still reducing it 700 a year.
There we have a motion on the floor, so we vote.
While we were discussing, you're saying $200 a meeting? 200 a meeting or 100 a meeting, it doesn't matter to me. But they're.
You gotta take your time. It does.
Speaking from experience, there's a lot more to this than what you think there is. Since I'm the newest to this game. Don't take that the wrong way. You don't mean any game, you know what I'm saying? It's reality.
We have the motion for the five, right?
Uh-huh. That's the high end.
You want to keep the.
Town. Yes, Austin.
I like the moot call question.
All right. Roll call.
Betsy Straw.
No.
Jeff Goings.
Yes.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Owen Costanza.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
No.
Well, it looks like we got four votes in the affirmative to, for the amended salary. All right. And so trustees' salaries, just go back to where, a little bit where they were before. Okay? So wait a minute. And any other discussion? All right then. Roll call vote, then, as amended.
Owen Costanza.
Yes.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
Betsy Straw.
Yes.
Jeff Goings.
Amended ordinance passes. All right, moving on to item number 10. We got a motion to discuss and approve check dispersment for payments scheduled to be paid prior to June 30, 2024 in the amount of $589,168.25 in AP checks, $17,487.41 in insurance expense checks, $24,544.53 in EFTS, and payroll with estimates included of $51,282.98 for a grand total of $682,483.17.
And I'd like to say that I appreciate Karina putting in the spreadsheet, very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to?
No moves, sir.
A motion by Jeff.
Second.
A second by Dan.
Anybody have any questions about it?
You have anything to add, Jeff?
No, I just saying earlier, the big one was Larson, Larson. 300, half of it's still Larson, Larson for the. There you go, one final panel.
All right. Barring any further questions? Roll call.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Owen Costanza.
Yes.
Betsy Straw.
Yes.
Jeff Goings. Bruce Moore.
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve checks is passed. Moving on to item number 11, we got a motion to discuss and approve Resolution 2024, Resolution of the Village of Poplar Grove, to adopt a vision statement for the village, village's source water protection plan.
No move.
Motion by Austin.
Second.
And a second by Dan. And I believe this was added in by Chris there at the end.
It was. It's the most exciting thing on tonight's agenda.
Yes, a statement that we want clean water.
So the source water protection plan requires the, you know, the supplier to have a vision statement for how it's going to protect its source water. Source water is the water that goes on to our distribution system and that we all drink. It has to contain a commitment, resources, and examine barriers that are there. And so essentially, it's a three-sentence vision statement that does just that, addresses each one of those. The board is certainly free to make any amendments that you wish. This is a simple recommendation that we provided to maybe get the discussion started. And if you like it as is, you can approve that, too.
All right. Any further discussion on that, discussion on that?
You talked about that one last month, the month before?
Short paragraph or two that was in the email and in the packet here. Anybody have anything to add? Are we just going to lose it briefly here? Kind of necessity, isn't it? Bottom line is, it says, the village adopts the following vision statement for it SWPP. The Village of Poplar Grove is dedicated to providing reliable, quality drinking water for its customers through preserving the quality and quantity of groundwater resources. The village has certified operating staff and a reserved operating budget to assure a safe and adequate water supply for the present and future generations. The village is committed to protecting groundwater resources by actively eliminating potential contamination threats and by safeguarding the existing water supply and water infrastructure. That's the gist of the resolution. Roll call.
Owen Costanza.
Yes.
Dan Cheek.
Yes.
Austin Davies.
Yes.
Bruce Moore.
Yes.
Betsy Straw. Jeff Goings.
Yes.
All right. Resolution for our source water protection plan passes. Moving on for the good of the village, Community Open House, June 26, 2024, at 6:00 PM. not outrageous, I don't think it's truly high rate of that nature, um, because higher than...